Regular meeting of the Destin City Council, October 18th, 2021, called order. Up first, Pastor David Butler, Faith Assembly, sir.
May we bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening with humbled hearts. We come before you in the midst of our difficulties and trials. We stand firmly, Lord, knowing that your hand is upon us and upon those that seek to do good. Holy One, with your cleansing love, bring healing and strength to our meeting this evening. We never want to allow ourselves to be swallowed up with anything that would appear to be selfish desires nor actions. Lord, I am praying that each is hopeful this meeting tonight will bear forth good fruit. Your word says that if you commit anything into your hands, you will make it successful. Therefore, this evening, we commit this meeting into your hands. May we exercise the fruit of your Spirit. Help us to find peaceful solutions to the problems that we face now and in the future. We know that even though things may seem to be impossible, all things are possible with you. Thank you for your unconditional love towards us. And according to Numbers, chapter six, "Now I speak the Lord's blessings." May the Lord bless you and keep you. May his face shine upon you and be gracious to you. May he give you his peace and his favor. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America.
Johnny, did you have a change here you'd like to recommend?
If it be suitable with the council, we'd like to move the consent agenda after after number three, between three and four.
Second.
Is everybody fine with that, moving the consent agenda up? That'll free some of our staff from the rest of the meeting, so we have a motion, a second. Let's have a vote. Votes unanimous, so moved. All right, item one, approval of the minutes of September 20th, 2021, regular city council meeting.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion of a second. Doing, Mr. Destin?
The vote is unanimous, so moved.
It's our turn, Lance. You want to meet me up there at the podium? This is our city manager, by the way. He doesn't get up here very often. All right, City of Destin proclamation, recognizing Florida City Government Week, October 18th through the 24th, 2021. Whereas city government is the government closest to most citizens and the one with the most direct daily impact upon its residents, and whereas municipal government provides services and programs that enhance the quality of life for residents, making their city their home, and whereas city government is administered for and by its citizens and is dependent upon public commitment to and to understand of its many responsibilities, and whereas city government officials and employees share the responsibility to pass along the understanding of public services and their benefits, and whereas the Florida League of Cities, I missed one, whereas the Florida City Government Week offers an important opportunity for elected officials and city staff to spread the word to all citizens of Florida that they could shape and influence this branch of government, and whereas the Florida League of Cities and its member cities have joined together to teach citizens about municipal government through a variety of activities. Now therefore, and I won't mess this part up, be it proclaimed that I, Mayor Gary Jarvis, on behalf of the Destin City Council, do hereby recognize and promote the Florida City Government Week, October 18th through the 24th, and encourage all citizens and other city government officials and employees to actively promote and participate in events that recognize and celebrate Florida city government. And that further, the City of Destin encourage educational partnerships between city government and schools as well as civic groups and other organizations. So done this 18th day of October. Lance, thank you for everything you do.
Appreciate it.
All righty then, tonight, item three, public comment on agenda items that are not public hearings and any other matter not on the agenda. All agenda items other than those under number five. We do have a public hearing tonight. Those comments will be reserved at that time for that public hearing under item five. You can come up to the microphone. You have three minutes to make your comments. State your name and your address, and at about 15 seconds left in your three minutes, I'll ask you to wrap up your comments and finish them on time. We have quite a few people here tonight, so we're going to hold it fairly close to three minutes for everyone. I'll try to be consistent in that. And again, you could talk of anything that's on the agenda other than a public hearing, and you're allowed to talk on anything that's not on the agenda other than public hearings. So I'll look to this side of the room first, and I'll work my way that way. So if anybody would like to come to the podium, just turn on the red button, state your name and your address, and you have three minutes. Does anybody want to approach the microphone from this section right here? Seeing none, is there anyone here in the center part that would like to approach the microphone? Patty Shirley, you have something to say. Nothing? Okay. Man, this meet, we, I might live up to my New Year's resolution and get out of here by eight o'clock tonight if things go well. No bets? All right, well, seeing no public comment, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period under item three right now, and we will move straight on to Lance.
We're going to do the consent agenda, sir.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Got a motion, got a second. We'll go ahead and take that to a vote. I even had a big arrow. I'm not here tonight. Waiting on you, Johnny. The vote is unanimous, so moved. Next up, now Lance, your turn.
Thanks, sir. First item is our monthly Capitol Project Status Report, and we have Ms. Crystal Strickland online to answer any questions that council may have.
We're good.
All right, moving on to the second item, Operations Financial Report. Again, Ms. Crystal Strickland is online to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions for Crystal after reading the briefing documents? This is a well-studied group, ma'am. That, plus you do a really good job of providing briefing materials. Go ahead, Lance, no comments.
Very good, thank you. Just have a few announcements. Let's see, number one, on Thursday, in this room, we will hold a special council meeting at 5:30 PM, the subject being the franchise agreement with Gulf Power. On the 25th, which is Monday, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Destin Community Center, the trunk or treat event will be held in the parking lot, so tell all your kids, grandkids, friends, that they can drive through there and pick up lots and lots of treats for the youngsters. Our library on next Wednesday at 10:30 will hold their annual event, too, so the younger generation, the real youngsters can have fun over there, and they can contact library staff to sign up for that. And finally, I believe that Mike Burgess is online with us, but I believe I saw the trucks finally out on Airport Road on the curve, applying the low fric, the high friction surfacing that has been promised to us for a while now. So, Michael, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Very good. So that's good news. That's a project we've been waiting for a long time. They will let that cure and then finish it up in a couple of weeks. So it is finally on the curve. That's all I have tonight, thank you.
Man, I wish we would do this every Monday. All right, that brings us up to item five, Point Visiting LLC, Point Resort LLC, requesting approval for major development order, major subdivision, marine construction permit, projects located at World Gulf Shores Drive, parcel ID 00-28-24-0000-0034-0000, 002S24-00000340020, with the property totaling approximately 4.34 acres. Kyle, at this time, it's a quasi judicial proceeding, so I'll let you take it over.
At this time, if we have any council members who would like to abstain from voting, I'd like to hear that first.
I will be abstaining from voting. I'm sure you're, it's no secret what happened, and on advice of council, I will be refraining from discussion and vote.
Thank you, Dr. Ramswell. At this point, if anyone who plans, both staff, applicant, members of the public who plan on testifying in this matter, could please stand, and I will swear you in. All right, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you were about to provide is the truth?
Yes.
All right, thank you all. At this time, we'll go in down the line, starting with Kevin. Have you had any ex parte communications related to this matter?
No, I have not.
Mr. King?
Just with, just with citizens.
So you simply had some discussions with your constituents?
That's right.
And even taking those discussions, you feel you can make a fair and impartial decision tonight?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Teresa?
I, too, have had conversations with citizens but can make a fair judgment after tonight.
Mr. Bagby?
No.
Mr. Destin?
Had a few discussions with citizens, but not only expressed a opinion for or against the project, so I don't think that would affect my vote.
Thank you, Mr. Destin. At this time, I will throw it down to staff and Ms. Cope.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the city council. The first thing I'd like to do this evening is to introduce the staff report and all of its 11 attachments into the record as city's composite exhibit A, please.
And no objection from the applicant on that? Seeing none for the record.
Thank you. I'll give an overview of the pending applications, and we will then allow the applicant to make its presentation, followed by input from the public. The applicant is proposing a docking facility along the western shoreline of Destin Harbor between the existing East Pass Towers condominium and the city's Noriega Point property. The proposed project is a 50-slip docking facility with three mooring points for a total of 53 vessel spaces with approximately one acre of dredge area located immediately offshore of the existing sheet pile wall. The proposal is a private, long-term residential docking facility that is an ancillary use to the long-term residential condominium development that was previously authorized in 2009 pursuant to development order DO 0917. The applicant is requesting approval for a major DO, a major subdivision, and marine construction permit, and in connection with these requests, has offered the proposed Gulf Shore Drive Extension Construction Agreement for city council consideration as well. Upon receipt of the applicant's request for the major DO, the city did request that the applicant also submit a major subdivision in order to show three lots consisting of the upland, the submerged lands, and the land identified as Gulf Shore Drive right-of-way. The right-of-way is platted as a lot in the proposed subdivision plans and will be deeded from the applicant to the city in fee simple pursuant to the terms of the Gulf Shore Drive Extension Construction Agreement. The long-term residential condo development was previously reviewed and approved by the city under development order 0917, as I previously mentioned. However, at that time, the docks were not included with that development order, and therefore, approval of the docking facilities as an ancillary use to the condo will require a major development order. Review of the upland development is not before the city council at this time because it was previously approved by the 2009 Destin City Council. However, just as a point of interest, I will note that the existing DO 0917 is for long-term residential uses and therefore does not permit short-term residential uses or timeshares. The proposed DO that is before you tonight for the docking facilities prohibits any use of the docks until such time as the upland condominium receives a certificate of occupancy. We also have proposed in the DO that any commercial or non-residential use of the docks is strictly prohibited, and actually, that's also prohibited by the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code. In defining commercial uses, we've noted that any non-residential use of the docks is strictly prohibited, and that would include a frequency and intensity of arrivals and departures, departures of the vessels that's not typical of a residential development. We also have prohibited subleasing of the docks by a non-resident of the condo. With the approval, certain fees would have to be paid, although there are not separate impact fees associated with the docks. DO 200917 required impact fees in the amount of $174,542 for the condo, and so we would require that to be paid prior to an issuance of certificate of completions for the dock. The applicant is also required to provide evidence to the city that the state's net positive benefit fee of $500,000 was paid to the trust for public land. And finally, prior to the issuance of any city permit, the applicant must pay to the city or provide mitigation for harbor impacts in an amount equal to 25% of the cost of construction for the docks. Also, I want to note that prior to tonight, the requested marine construction permit received a recommendation of approval by four-one vote at the Harbor and Waterways Board with Mr. Tadlock as the dissenting vote. The recommendation was with three conditions, including payment of the fees I just referenced, as well as a final CO being issued for the condo, and city council approval of the development order and major subdivision applications. Notably, if the marine construction permit is approved this evening, the applicant remains obligated to obtain all required state permits and submit them to the city to begin the actual construction permitting process. So at this point, we are going to let the applicant come up and make its presentation, and then we'll reserve the right to just give you a conclusion at the end and advise you as to what exactly you are reviewing, and remind you that it's actually four items, DO, subdivision, marine construction permit, and the road agreement. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Let me make sure, okay, it's working. Gary Hunter with Holtzman Vogel Law Firm here on behalf of the applicant. We're going to do two things. I'd say we'll be brief, for me, we'll be brief, and we'll address questions. If you have questions, we'll address public comments to the extent the public raises issues that we need to address. Let me, so y'all can see the board behind me, I'm going to, I'm going to quickly go through this presentation, just of, an overview of what we're doing, and then Mr. Matt Trammell also will have, he's an expert witness, since it's a quasi judicial hearing, my testimony is not admissible evidence, and so Mr. Trammell will try to address the issues that are admissible for purposes of the dock permit, and then we'll answer any questions you all have, again, address the public comments, and then if you have questions after that, we're happy to address those as well. That said, let me, just briefly, so, and Ms. Cope said it, this is not an, we're not requesting approval of the condominium. That was approved 11 years ago. So tonight, we're asking for a docking permit to address solely a dock permit for the residents of the condominium. It's a, it's a long-term condominium, meaning I believe the, the way the condo docks read and the way the city code reads is short-term rentals are prohibited. It is a year or longer of residence at that condominium in order to have access to the docks. The docks have no additional transportation impacts on the city because the docks are owned by people that live in the condominium. There are 79 condominium units approved by the city for that location. There are 50 dock hard slips and three temporary slips associated with the dock, so fifth, a total of 53, which is, I believe, 26 less than what we're permitted at that location. Let me, I believe Ms. Cope said this earlier, but three things up for approval tonight. So major development order and marine construction permit, that's the dock permit for the facility that we're talking about. A major subdivision of Point Beach and Yacht Club, that's the, again, at the, I believe we're doing this at the request of the city, but it basically subdivides the three parcels, one of which is already owned by the city, the road right-of-way is owned by the city, into three different pieces of property and plots them according to your city code. And then the Gulf Shore Drive Extension Construction Agreement, which, if this all gets approved, we would agree to provide the construction of the road right-of-way through the project. Just to generally, I know this is hard to see for all of us, at least for me, but that generally depicts where the project is located, where we're talking about, so you can generally get an idea of where we're talking. This is a, this is, again, the docking facility as proposed, so again, and Mr. Trammell will talk about this, but we have DEP permits, we have a Corps of Engineers permit already for this docking facility as approved, depicted on these plans. 50 slips with three transient slips. Again, if you look, if you're looking at the screen, on the right is Dock C, there's two slips to the end of Dock C, and to the far left is Dock A, there's one transient slip on the end of Dock, or on the side of Dock A. Again, I said this earlier, but I'll say it again, there's no commercial use allowed at this docking facility. It's an ancillary docking facility included only for the operators, the owners of the condominium units. There's three docks, 53 vessels, 50 slips, and three additional mooring points. Importantly, the docking facility, I guess, parcel A, so if you go backwards, the one up at the top of the facility, is 119 feet from the navigable waterway, and then going backwards, if you look down at the bottom of Dock, so Dock C, is 500 feet from the navigable waterway, which is, again, Mr. Trammell will testify to this, but is far more than is accustomed from a standpoint of what's normal in the sense of what's safe from, from a federal or state standpoint. And, and again, we're 25 feet from the riparian lines as indicated on this, again, by the drawing that you're seeing, but on both ends, both the north and south end, we're 25 feet from the riparian lines. So again, Ms. Cope testified or went over this, but we're, we have an existing approval, City of Destin Development Order 09-17. We're not seeking any modification of that other than the docking facility associated with that this evening. We've got a Florida Department of Rarminal permit for the docking facility. The permit number is issued up there. I believe that was issued in January of 2019, and then the Army Corps of Engineers permit was issued in February of 2019. was issued in February of 2019. The conditions of approval, I believe, again, Ms. Cope doing the good job that she traditionally does, went over these, but I'll hit them real quick. $500,000 net positive benefit payment to the Trust for Public Land in order to get the approval of the dock permit from the city. We have no problem with that. Satisfy the City of Destin net positive environmental benefit by paying a contribution or 25% of the construction costs of the dock, we have no problem with that. Use of the docking facilities contingent upon final CO for development order DO 09-17, again, we have no problem with that. They may get built in conjunction with each other, but obviously, the dock is usable by the residents of the condominium, and so the residents of the condominium will be there before the dock is usable. This is, again, depicting poorly, at least to my eyes, the Point Beach and Yacht Club subdivision plat. So if you see the curvature area through the depiction, that's the roadway, that's the 100-foot right-of-way owned by the City of Destin. To the right of that, kind of, sort of to the right of that, is the docking facility, and then to the left below that is the Point Resort facility, which is not an issue tonight. So, from a major subdivision standpoint, just to clarify a few existing issues, the City of Destin, I mean, that's the reason, I believe, the city staff asked us to do this. It says the City of Destin will own the 100-foot right-of-way of Gulf Shore Drive through where now is the property, actually, the city has owned that since, I believe, 2010. And the Point Resort ownership of the parcel, that is the non-harbor side parcel, the non-dock parcel, and then the Point Mezzanine ownership of the dock parcel. So that's the clarity that is provided by the existing subdivision process that the city asks us to go through. And then the Gulf Shore Drive Extension Construction Agreement, again, I'll say it resolves any potential issues, title issues, those, I mean, technically, I guess there is a wild deed, which frankly, probably Kyle can speak to better than I can speak to, but that predates the 2009 development order on the parcel at issue, the upland parcel at issue. This clears that up, and it clears up the right-of-way vis-à-vis the 100-foot right-of-way that I depicted to you a minute ago on the screen. It shows clarity, provides clarity of ownership of both the Point Resort LLC parcel, the non-docking facility parcel, the Point parcel that will house the condominium units, and then the Point Mezzanine LLC parcel is where the dock will be located. It provides clarity of that. It provides clarity that we'll be responsible to build the road Gulf Shore Drive Extension through the property in the city's right-of-way to the point of the park, which is to be built, and we're prepared to do that, subject to, of course, y'all and DEP finishing the agreements related to that, and we're prepared thereafter to move forward with the construction in a relatively quick timeframe. And so those issues are addressed. Mr. Trammell, I believe, is sitting behind me and can address a few of the technical issues, answer any questions you all have. We'll, of course, address questions the public has if they have any questions, and then if y'all have additional questions, we'll address those. But thank you for your time, and Matt?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Matt Trammell, I'm a docking facility consultant with the applicant. I was originally the engineer of record when the applications were first submitted to the DEP and the Corps of Engineers, as well as the City of Destin, so just wanted to provide a very brief overview from 10,000-foot view of specifically what's going to be occurring with the construction. I guess, before I get into that, Mr. Hunter had alluded to it, but the docking facility primarily is targeting your high-end luxury vessels. So, again, we're not talking commercial vessels, we're not talking livery by any means, we're talking a high-end amenity to a luxury upland development. So very similar to the boats you see docked behind Bochamps and a few other high-end developments in the area. So keep that in mind, these are vessels on the order of a million dollars or more. These are vessels that typically have licensed captains, vessels that typically have a series of crew that maintains them. So the docking facility itself includes the three docks. There is the small parcel, currently, as it's platted now, is seaward on the harbor side of the existing bulkhead. That existing bulkhead will be stabilized, the material on the harbor shoreline will be dredged, it will be, we envision it will be hydraulically pumped to the upland parcel. The scale of that dredging is approximately 10,000 cubic yards, give or take, changes every day. That material will be utilized for foundation work for the upland, the future upland development. The dock construction will proceed very shortly thereafter, once the dredging has occurred. Here's just a quick shot of the existing conditions. I'll draw your attention to the federal navigation channel that's offshore, you can see the dock leg, we're remaining within the riparian waters, and then what's hard to make out is this existing shoal, hence the need for the dock leg in the federal navigation channel. But the depths offshore of the current, the parcel outside of the proposed dredging area are all basically eight to 12 feet of water, so well-sufficient water depth for the docking facility. So, very briefly, I'm sure some of you are familiar with the regulatory process, the state and federal authorizations. This project is occurring on sovereign submerged lands, the state of Florida DEP is the regulatory authority in state waters. They have done quite a comprehensive analysis during the review of the project. That included engineering analyses, environmental analyses, biological assessment of the water quality, the sediment is to be dredged. They have a series of criteria that they establish to ensure the project will not adversely affect the public health, safety, and welfare. It was the determination of the state that this project would not first have any adverse impacts, the project would not adversely affect navigation, water flow, erosion, or And the applicant has gone above the minimum criteria that Mr. Hunter had mentioned. State and federal agencies typically require a minimum 75-foot setback from a federal navigation channel. As you mentioned, this docking facility is approximately 120 feet, and that's at the closest point. You can see the other facilities further to the south, some exceed 500 feet in those areas. There will be reflective aids, there will be white lights placed at the end of the dock, all the protective features that we deem to be necessary. The slip density that the city code allows, there's much more detail in the staff report, so I apologize, some of this information is repeated. The max slip count that is allowed for the particular parcel is 75. You can, we're well, you know, 20 slips well below that. The project is not at the mouth of the Destin Harbor, something to keep in mind, it's difficult, I understand, with the scale here, but we're approximately 2,000 feet further landward in the tip of Noriega Point, with the mouth of Destin Harbor being a little bit further than that, so according to the federal navigation channel, this is approximately Station 25, and this is approximately Station 30. That's approximately 2,500 linear feet and 3,000 linear feet from the true mouth and the beginning of the federal navigation channel. I can't go into further detail, but to keep, to keep from boring you too much with all the gory details of regulatory permitting, I'll perhaps save those. If you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to come back up. Yes, and I'll just mention with the dredging, obviously, it's, again, reiterated in the staff report, there will be minimal disturbance to the city's right-of-way, the dredging will occur hydraulically, there will be a small discharge line that traverses that right-of-way. These details will be worked out with the city building department when that right-of-way permit is authorized, and aside from the work for the stabilization of the existing bulkhead, there will be no parking of vehicles, no staging of equipment, no construction operations whatsoever within the city's right-of-way for the marina construction or the future upland development, so. That, Gary, did you have any final?
Thank you, Matt. So, just in closing, Mayor and commission members, we've, and, again, we're here to address whatever questions you all have for as long as you'd like to ask them. You see our three requests. So major development order and marine construction permit for the docking facility itself, major subdivision Point Beach and Yacht Club plat, which was requested by city staff, we have no problem with that. And then, of course, the Gulf Shore Drive Extension Construction Agreement, which I think Mr. Baumann and Ms. Bowman, Ms. Cope, I'm sorry, put together, and we're fine with that. It meets the requirements of, I believe, your code, and generally, we were not responsible, I will say this to now, and then we'll address it again if y'all need us to later, but we were not responsible for constructing the road. That was either the city, or the county, or someone in between, but not us. We're happy to construct the road if we get approval of the dock facility. Remember, the condominium facility has been approved, so that is not before you all tonight, and it really is the docking facility, the major development order associates only with the docking facility, the major subdivision of Point Beach does include the condominium facility, but we don't need it to include the condominium facility, at least my opinion is, we don't need it to include the condominium facility. And then, so the Gulf Shore Drive Construction Extension Agreement is our offer to be done with this and move on. And with that, I'll sit down, I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you have right now, or have one of the probably more qualified people come up and answer questions, and then we'll address any questions you have after the public comment.
Yeah, Gary, I think what we're gonna do is, we're gonna have the public comment portion of it. Our council members will take notes and items during what they hear in the public comment, and then at, when I close that, then we'll open it up for discussion with the council members, and they can question you or our staff at that time with anything that's brought up by the public and/or questions they have of their own.
That works.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
Cope?
Let's go ahead and open up the public comment, Mayor.
Okay, sure will. Ground rules on this particular subject is try not to be emotional, address myself or the council as a whole with any comments. It's not a question-and-answer period, just, you got three minutes to make your comments. Council members will write down any notes or questions that arise out of those comments to ask of the applicants and/or our legal team. And I'm gonna be consistent with the three minutes, I'll give everyone, I'll let you know when you got 15 seconds left to wrap it up, and at the end of the three minutes, your time will be up. So, like I said, just try to keep everything in good decorum, and we'll look forward to hearing all the public comments. And at this time, I'm gonna open up the public comment of this hearing, and instead of starting over here, because nobody wanted to get up, I'm gonna start over here at this, and I'll work my way that way, and I'll give everybody ample opportunity to step up. So, anyone can come up, all, so let's go ahead and come on. Don't be shy, after this person talks. Also, if somebody makes some points that you were gonna make, you could just say, "I agree with everything they said, but I'd like to add," and that'll enhance, that'll actually help your three minutes, because you can add talking points that another person's already hit on by just saying, "I agree with the previous speakers, but I'd also like to add." And that gives you a little more time of your three minutes to give your own personal thoughts. Go ahead, Marcy, come on up.
It's been a while. Hello, everyone. Marcy Bell, Three Gulf Rees Court. As you all know, I live on Holiday Isle, and this project would impact me some way or another. I'm actually a fence sitter. I always look at myself as a fence sitter. I like try to look at both sides of every story, and how people feel about things, and how I feel about things. So I just have a couple of questions. I'm not asking for an answer while I'm standing here, but I'm just posing questions that are concerning to me. So if we have, I believe the gentleman said, 53 boat slips, and they're to match the units in the building, that will eventually be built, or however they work it out, what happens if we only build a 30-unit building? But we build the boat docking area before that? So now we have 53 slips, but we only have 30 units, and they're supposed to match? Just kind of a question that I had, like, well, what happens to the ownership of those other ones? Or do they become commercial down the road, years down the road? I mean, how does that work? That's just a question that I have for whoever wants to answer it. How are we, as the residents of Holiday Isle and along Gulf Shore Drive, how are we to be assured that any time in the future that this will never be turned into a commercial facility? If the zoning is changed, something happens, 10 years, 20 years down the road, I might be dead, but I do have a kid, you know? So, and there's other people who are moving in that are younger than I am. So that was one of my second questions. I was always under the impression that the first development order, the one that they talk about that's on the large parcel, the marina slips were contingent upon the building of the building first. I don't know that that's to be true, it's just a question that I'm throwing out there. And then the only last question that I have, which is maybe none of my business, but I'm gonna ask it anyways, is if we're doing all this in conjunction with each other, why are the two parcels in two separate names? Like, why aren't the parcels in the same name entity? Like, why is one Point Resort and one is Mezzanine, whatever it is? So those are just my questions, doesn't mean that they're right, wrong, or indifferent, they're just questions that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcy. Up next? Nobody's behind you, come on up. Just hit the red button.
I just have some quick questions. Ian Blaze, 702 North Lakeside Drive, Destin. Just a couple of questions for the engineers and whatnot. Are the plans to be built simultaneously, like she said, is the dock gonna be built before the property? If that's the case, why are we building the dock before the property in the event that we're also doing a harbor capacity study committee meeting, or, excuse me, harbor capacity study right now on vessel, what the harbor can hold in terms of vessels? It feels like it's, I don't know, it seems rushed. I understand, there's been talk about the channel moving south for the north side of the harbor, how does that affect that? I don't know if that's even happening or not. You mentioned 53 slips, what size vessel, what size slips are those? And what's the max size of the vessel? Because some of the vessels overhang, if you put, you know, you got a 70-foot slip, you might, you could put an 80-foot, 90-foot boat in there and then approach the shortest point, that 120 distance from the channel. Will there be reduced? Here's another one, why wasn't this, in '09 when it was approved, why wasn't this submitted for approval then, and we wouldn't be here now, the whole project would be approved? Was this an add-on, or was there another motivation for that? Oh, and then how soon would the construction start? Expected completion time? Yeah, and I guess, I guess my thing is, with regard to building them together... is, with regard to building them together simultaneously, I'd prefer that. Sorry, I prefer that, simply because I don't want to see a bunch of docks built out that aren't used, and the property's committed to that project. And then there's some kind of delay for the actual structure itself. Because, like, nobody will be able to use the docks as long as there's no structure behind it. So, I guess, I don't have any issues with it if it's built together, and it's not, you know, the waterfront's not committed to all these docks that nobody can use until the structure's behind it's built. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ian. Next. Anyone? Come on up. Just press a button. There you go.
Laurie Sanders, 110 Gulf Shore Drive. My concerns, hi, council members. My concerns are parking, and the dumpster. And another question I had was a culvert, which has to do with the upland, with the recent flooding that we've had with storms. And I don't know if that's in the plans for them to build like a culvert for the drainage. I know in East Pass Towers, too, we have a lot of water bubbling up in the garage when we get a heavy rain, and I want to know that it can drain well. The parking, like they were talking about, the crew, I was curious where the parking would be, and how much they have. I was curious if there's a dumpster for the marina, or, and where that dumpster would be put out on the road for pickup? Or are they utilizing the upland building dumpsters, which was what I heard at the last meeting for the marina waterways approval? For the road, I was interested in knowing, in front of 100 Gulf Shore Drive, is where the parking area is. And with the road, right now, the sidewalk, I don't know, I'm not sure who owns that land. I guess, I don't know if it was of verbal deed to the city. But right now, the sidewalk ends in the building of the marina that's there now. So, I'm wondering how or who's responsible for connecting that sidewalk that ends in a building to the new sidewalk of the new development. And then I was also concerned with the parking lot, with that huge parking lot in front of 100 Gulf Shore Drive that has a lot of parking. I don't understand why that could not be moved to the entrance of the park. Even for the development, it would behoove them to have it there, because they're gonna have a lot of people walking for fireworks, and to use Noriega Point, walking in front of their beautiful facilities. And it just makes sense to me to put the parking at the entrance to the park. And if they are going to be willing to pay for the road, if they could move that parking lot to the end of the road, to the entrance of the park, it just makes a whole lot more sense than where it's located now. Those are, I think, most of my concerns. The other thing I wasn't too sure about was, what is the definition of a flexible slip or a transient slip? I've heard both terms being used, and I'm not sure what they mean. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Lauren. Up next. Anyone? All right. I'm gonna move over here towards this group. Anyone here would like to come up and make any comments about this project? Seeing none, I'll move over here. Is anyone like to stand up, make any comments? Come on up. The light's on. All you have to do, state your name and address. You got
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Mayor and councilman, I would like to, my name is Gina Glasgow, and I live at 309 Juniper. I've been a Destin resident since 1984. After I graduated from the University of Alabama, it was my first opportunity to work at the Holiday Inn in Destin. And I have seen a lot of major growth since then. I worked at the tallest building in Destin in 1984. It was the only building that was of 12 stories at that time, and I have seen a lot of things happen. I come here tonight because I'm excited about a new opportunity of growth in Destin. I've seen a lot of stuff go up. Tattoo parlors, foot massages, old shopping centers that are dilapidated, a place you can buy whatever you need near Krispy Kreme, signage that's torn down, people telling me when I go to visit my mother in Birmingham, what's happening to Destin. And I'm very disappointed. I know Point Mezzanine from acquaintance, and I was honored when they asked me if I had some ideas about facility maintenance, which I was very pleased to say that I do. I worked at the Emerald Grand for 14 years in that capacity. And I'm excited to hear about an opportunity of growth in Destin that brings a clientele of individuals that are in an elite economic bracket. And I don't mean to be, I'm a country girl, but it is nice to know that we're not gonna have another timeshare. We're not gonna have another Hotel Six, or Motel Six, or Tom Bowdette leave the light on for me. It's nice to know that we're gonna have a company that I have been associated with on other properties in Orlando and in New Orleans that is gonna build a quality product. But number one, they have the money to do it. And number two, they pay their bills, and they are very reputable. Yes, are they? You can hear all kinds of things on the street. I can hear that about each and every one of you. Do I believe them? No. Do I hear them? Make judgment, maybe. But I still go on, and I'm very proud of this city. And I love it. I've known Dewey for years, and he taught me a valuable lesson. Because I was hurt one day, I said, "I can't believe all this growth, Dewey. What are we gonna do?" He said, "Gina, if it's not somebody, somebody is gonna build in Destin. So if it's not this organization, somebody will build." And it may not be the clientele that we are looking at right now. So I just ask you to keep an open mind about that. Change is hard. I've seen it. It's been hard on me to see it. But please keep an open mind. We need something of a positive growth in Destin. We haven't had that in a while. I'm tired of the power hours. I'm tired of the development of other things in Destin. Okay, please look at maybe giving an opportunity of something with growth and development that's of a positive nature. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gina. All right. Last call. Anyone else would like to make a comment on this particular project? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead, Kyle, and close the public comment period. At this time, we can give an opportunity for the applicants to make any comments, or respond to anything that they heard. Or if you guys want to sit, Pat, we'll open it up and let the council members start asking you or the staff questions on this application. It's up to you, Gary or Matt. Are you good?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. All right. Well, then we'll start. First person up is Ms. Abear.
Thank you, mayor. Great presentation. The questions I will ask on behalf of the citizens that came up. The question about the parking and the dumpster, would you have a dumpster on-site for the docking facility? Would the upland dumpster be the one that would be used to haul off the debris as you're building?
Commissioner, no. There will be no dumpster on the, where the dock is located. There will be trash receptacles there, but the dumpster will be located where the condominium facility is located.
My second question is the size of the yachts. So, you could have a 73-foot Donzy, and then you have a 60-foot pleasure yacht. If you've got 50 slips, how are they set up to where you wouldn't have the overhang of maybe three foot from one Donzy to maybe a pleasure yacht that might not be as large in the length or in the girth of the boat itself? So have you taken into account on the size, length, et cetera, for the yachts so that you can accommodate all of them in those slips?
I'll let Matt correct me if I'm wrong, but I'll try to answer that question. So, the DEP permit states how long the boats can be. So, it provides the length of the dock, and we cannot extend beyond the length of the dock. So, I believe, and Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe 68 feet is the longest dock, I mean, and therefore the longest boat that can be located. And I believe that's on our most southern dock, so the furthest away from the channel. And it goes down from there. So, the temporary docking facilities would allow longer boats to be located there, but they're temporary, and they're not protruding out into the channel.
And to clarify, temporary would be, say, somebody that lives in that condominium, their friends come over from Houston, and they're in a 60-foot pleasure yacht, they have a place to park their yacht while they're visiting for the week. That's what those extra transient slips are for, correct?
I'll let Matt answer that. I guess that's probably a good analogy, but go ahead. The term we would prefer to use is flexible mooring. So, and Gary is correct, that the state submerged land lease requires you can only have a boat of a specific length within a specific slip. So I understand the concern, but if it's a 50-foot slip, a 50-foot boat or less will be housed within that slip. Now, the flexible, and there are those flexible mooring areas, they run up to 150 linear feet of dock. So, yes, a yacht could come in, and that is a permanent slip, but the term flexible is simply that. We can put up to 140-foot boat there. We can also put a 60-foot boat there. So it's just to provide flexibility. But it is, and it should be considered, a permanent slip.
So those extra three slips are flexible in that their sizeing can be adjusted depending on the owner's yacht that they have?
Correct. But I wish I had the presentation up. Recall that in both locations where the flexible slips are located, they're interior to where the other slips would extend beyond them. So.
We have that in our presentation.
Yes, ma'am.
We could see better here than the audience could on the screens. And then the last question that I, just curious, this is what's been asked, is there won't be any Crab Island boat pickups from those docks, taking them out to Crab Island? Those are strictly owner lot slots, correct? No temporary cabs or whatever pulling up there?
That's right. It isn't allowed. Yes, ma'am. Correct.
Those are my questions. Thank you, mayor. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Great presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Mr. Destin, Mr. Begbie?
I have questions. I'd like to wait till the end.
Do you, well, they're done with their presentation, so we're at that portion. I'm not asking for a motion yet.
No one else that's pushed, or I don't want?
Not yet. I don't have anybody on. Want to push a button? All right. Johnny stepped up to the plate here. Thank you, Mr. King. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, guys, for the presentation, for being here. I feel like I've got a bunch of questions. The, I think we're all familiar with, real quick, how many additional parking spots does this open up on Gulf Shore Drive going into the park? Are you guys?
So you're talking about on the road itself?
Right.
Gosh. Kyle?
No, I was told 22. I was just gonna see if you guys could, if y'all would just throw it out there, so to confirm.
Is there a question with staff?
Yeah. So, just so you're aware, the road has not been fully designed and engineered, but the concept of the FDP had submitted to the city, which the city approved, had, I believe, 22 spots on it.
So, and here's, this is a, we, my, I use a boat down there at East Pass Towers. If you get there before daylight, and it's time to go fishing, you got all the parking in the world. When you come back, there's, you can't hardly get out. That's one of my main concerns, is we've got 22 additional parking spots. If the, if we've got, let's say there's, Joe Schmo buys the biggest, baddest condo in y'all's place, and he's got an 80-foot Viking with, that's got a captain and, you know, two mates, those guys are there every day. So, let's say the captain shows up at 6, you got a mate that shows up at 7, and then the third guy shows up at 9. We got three cars. If there's, times 10, that's 30 slips. There's 30 parking spots. So, that would be a question of mine. You guys can expand on that if you'd like. When you say, I love that clientele. I'm with you guys. I think that's what we need. Ms. Glasgow, thank you for bringing that up. I think it's a wonderful clientele to bring to town. I think we need more of that. We're trying to promote more of that. And I think that this does that. I would be, are there, is there gonna be parking in the resort for captain and crew, and, you know, the marine mechanic? And are we gonna be using, are we gonna be burning up all of City of Destin's parking for?
Can I jump in to answer that for you? So, the parking is covered by the 2009 DO. Okay, there's 153 spaces, and those are associated with the condo units, depending on the number of bedrooms. But basically, for a place with three bedrooms, it would require two and a half parking spots. So, when you add them all up, comes to 153. There is nothing additional required for the slips because they are connected to those units. So, it's not intended to be something where additional parties are coming in just to use the slips. It's supposed to be for the residents. So, I hope that answers your question.
Sort of. I mean, if it's, if I buy a condo in there, and I want to buy a 70-foot boat, I'm not driving that boat. I mean, I can, once it's out of the pass, I can figure out how to get it to where I need to go. But I don't feel, you know, I may not feel comfortable doing it. So you gotta have a captain and crew. Where do they park?
You get two and a half spots per your unit. And there are 75 units, about 75, or 79.
79.
79 units.
But if the husband and wife both have a car, and the captain and the first mate on the yacht are there every day, where do they park?
Well, you have two and a half spots per unit. Gotta work it out. Or, there can be some additional parking along Gulf Shore Drive, as we talked about. But you know how many parking spots you have? It's covered by the upland DO. There's not additional parking for the docks, because the code doesn't require additional parking for the docks.
Just one more thing. We, y'all had mentioned that it would be a relatively quick timeframe. Do we have an idea of the timeframe, what it's gonna look like, more precisely?
From the construction of the docking facility?
Right. And Mr. Blaze brought that up as well, with the construction of the docking and the, that's a question that I had as well, is, are we, if we've got 50 slips here, and the, I don't know what the timeline or what the timeframe is for the condo, but if we have 50 slips there, and it's three years down the road, we're just making fish habitat, right? I mean, you can't.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
That, all right. What's the timeline look like on the dock?
So, it's a little unclear. I think the dock and the condominium get built concurrently. The dock's easier to build, obviously, than the condominium is to build. Even though there's only 79 units there, it's just more entailed from a construction standpoint. So, my guess is they progress partially. The dock gets built, maybe not completely the dock gets built. It's not usable until the condominium's got a CO associated with it. So, you'd be, I mean, seriously, and your question is a fair and reasonable question, but you'd be foolish to go build the dock and spend all the money that you're spending to do the dock and not build a condominium at the same time.
And just out of curiosity, Ms. Bell brought up a, and I could have missed this, Cam and the...
Are you gonna ask about what she said, if there are a different number of slips than units, and that?
Yeah.
So, I did want to answer the legal question that she asked, which had to do with what happens if, at some point in the future, they want to use the docks for a commercial, or if the number of slips don't exactly match the number of condo units. Well, first of all, the slips don't exactly match the number of condo units. There are 79 condo units and 53 slips, so there are more condo units than slips. However, they're always going to be tied to the condo. There would be, I mean, I don't want to say anything's impossible, but there would probably be over eight public hearings if they were ever going to try to make that a commercial dock. Why? Because the future land use designation on the property is high-density residential. The zoning on the property is high-density residential. High-density residential does not allow commercial uses. A commercial dock is prohibited. You would need, in order to make that a commercial dock, a comprehensive plan amendment, which takes an LPA hearing followed by two city council hearings, that's three. You would then... then need to change the zoning, which would take an LPA hearing and two city council hearings, that's six. And then, you would need to amend your DO and do a change-of-use application, which is another two hearings at the harbor board and the city council for eight. They'd also then need to get a new permit from DEP, I believe, because the DEP permit provides that the slips are tied to the residential units. So, it is not going to be a commercial dock.
I had the higher hopes that it'd be commercial, but Ms. Camp just convinced me that it won't.
All righty, just don't go away. Are you done? Are you, Kevin, good? All right, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor.
We're gonna, after that motion, there'll be other opportunities.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'll reserve the right to ask some questions later if possible.
Yeah, what, once we get through talking with our presenters, I'll entertain a motion, and after the owner, if we get a second, a motion in a second, then we'll open for discussion once more.
I have a list of questions for possibly some staff and some applicant, and I will also say that I had lots of discussions with staff already and pre-meetings as well. Mr. Mayor, I know you like us to do that, so a lot of these questions I just wanted to talk about tonight as well. So, sir, do you know why in 2009, the docks were taken off of the original DO whenever they were originally gonna build this project?
As, I did practice law in 2009. I know it's hard for you to believe, and I actually represented the applicant, but someone else in my office handled that hearing. As I recall, and Kyle, you may have memory of this yourself, or at least from looking over the documents, I don't mean from being part of the hearing, there was not a dock associated in 2009. So, it was just the condominium was approved in 2009, and specifically, we were not asking for a dock in 2009.
I believe there's language in either staff report or other stuff that says there was a dock and it was removed from the application.
I'm sorry if that's confusing. It was not in the application and removed. The 2009 DO provides that this DO does not contemplate docks. And I believe we had, I don't know if they remember, but there's a couple of council members that may have been here in 2009, and they may remember whether a dock was discussed. I don't believe a dock was discussed, but we can ask.
That's fine. Sure. You talk about the road being built, that you're gonna, they're gonna build for, they're gonna, you're gonna build the road.
Yes, sir.
The right-of-way road. I'm not an engineer and don't pretend to be one, but without that road, could you build a nine-story condo without a road to go build it?
No.
Okay.
So, no.
So, I mean, if this didn't happen, you'd probably be building a road to go do the construction of the nine-story condominium.
Your point's a fair point, but I think we'd have a discussion, more of a discussion on who is responsible to pay for the road.
Okay. Sure. Mr. Trammell talked about the DEP, I think it's the DEP, determines, you know, if, when they review the application for the docks, they determine the safety, the health, and all that types of stuff. Do you know, is there a specific type of study that they do to answer the question of the health and safety about a 53-unit slip when they actually approve it, or what's the health and safety that they're really looking at?
It's a very long and convoluted answer, but I will do my best.
Thank you.
So, first of all, as engineers, we all look at these projects, and, you know, our first cannon is to uphold the public health and safety, the health, safety, and welfare of the general public. So, we had done that, our own assessment and analysis. The application are submitted to state and federal regulatory agencies, and they have a tremendous amount of criteria that they review. Recreational use of the waterway, commercial use of the waterway, fisheries habitat, water quality analyses, hydrodynamic analyses, whether or not this specific development docking facility will result in any pollutants into the water body, if the water body has the capacity to sustain that. All of that work was performed. It was reviewed and approved by not only state and federal agencies, but also their commenting agency, so that's the U.S. Coast Guard, the Fish and Wildlife Service, and the Fish and, FWC, FWS and FWC. And all of those agencies have their own missions, but at the end of the day, they're all focused on the ultimate goal is public health, welfare, and safety.
Do they look at, can the body of water that the dock is being built in actually handle with and withhold, stand the use that's gonna be happening there, besides the quality of the water, discharge, and all that? Do they look at what's happening in the body of water when you bring 53 boats there?
Yes, yes. So, that's, the federal government has regulations typically on how close you can site a facility to a federal navigation channel, or even a water body with sufficient depth. That minimum requirement typically is 75 to 100 feet, and it depends on the use of the waterway. Is it an intercoastal? Is it a relatively small recreational area? Is it immediately adjacent to a port facility? All of these items are considered, and our minimum for this project, specific project, was held to 75-foot minimum, and we nearly doubled that.
Sure. So, their way of saying it's okay is just because the federal minimum is 75 feet, so that's probably why it's okay. We're at 100 minimum, not really the activity of the entire harbor.
Yeah, that is one of the criteria, but they do look at the grander picture, the comprehensive view as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Ms. Camp, what's the normal residential use? Is that what the language was of the mooring slips? Can only be, was it normal?
I see, I think I see what you're saying. You're talking about the frequency and intensity language.
Yeah.
So, that comes from case law in courts. So, basically, a way that people define commercial uses is often, if you're making a profit, if money is exchanged, things of that nature. But we wanted to be more inclusive than that because we didn't want, you know, one of the concerns was the tours coming back and forth, and maybe they wouldn't be paid. But we still wanted to ensure that that type of a commercial use did not occur. So, we put in the language from some of the courts that look at issues like this, and we said the intensity and the frequency of the departures and arrivals at the slips need to be typical to what occurs as a residence. Now, can I put a number on that and say no more than X departures a day? No. But generally, what we would do at the code enforcement level before the special magistrate or in a court would be, look at the overall picture, what's going on every day? How many times are they coming back and forth? Is this happening every day? Does it appear overall to be a commercial use? And you just present your evidence, and you let the third-party tribunal decide.
Thank you. I've got a few more, and I'll be moving on. What happens if the condo, if Point Resort sells the condo to somebody?
It sells the dock also.
So, if all this passes, if the condo sells, the dock sell with it. Correct. Thank you, sir. We talked about putting clarity on three plots and parcels. We need to put clarity on it for, I think, item B on the reason why we're here tonight. If I go look it up right now, I see three plots already. I see Point Resort owns something. I see the city already has a right-of-way that was given to us 12 years ago. And I see Point Mezzanine has a small, valued little parcel that they want to put 53 yachts on. So, what needs clarity in regards to the three plots, unless that's a staff question?
Well, Councilmember Smith, that was their argument, and we made them do it anyway.
Sure. I guess I'm gonna argue for it with you guys.
So, I will let Mr. Zenguzi respond as to why we required the subdivision.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening to you all. It's because, as we were reviewing it, there were a number of deeds that were conflicting with each other, and therefore, we just wanted to make sure that all the boundaries for all the properties are clear, and especially the fact that the alignment now is one that will lead to the park.
But is it already three?
Right now, we do have a property that was, it's not right-of-way, it is real estate property given to the city, and then there are two parcels, correct?
So, what benefit does the neighborhood application or the neighborhood development give to the owner by turning it into a neighborhood development?
Neighborhood development. I don't understand.
Subdivision.
Oh.
Subdivision application.
From our standpoint...
Is there a benefit of having that classification?
For records, yes. It is extremely critical that our plots and future records that are referenced going forward are clear, and right now, it is not that clear.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. King talked about crude vessels, and Mr. Mayor, you might answer this, but if you have captains and mates, is that not commercial activity happening because they own it as a full-time resident? So, like, if they, if I own a yacht and I pay employees to run my yacht, is that commercial activity happening at the docks? Because it's not, the boat's not being rented out?
No, no. We're saying that the boats are tied to the residence of the condo. They're owned by residents of the condo.
Sure.
If they want a licensed captain to, you know, steer their ship, good for them.
Sure.
But that doesn't make it a commercial use for purposes of the dock. It may be that they're paying someone commercially to run their boat, but the docks are still residential in nature. They're not doing business from the dock.
Sure. Okay. That's it, I think, for now. You know, Mr. King said, and man that spoke up here about the people that this will bring to us. I mean, I do agree that it has a very nice look that could potentially come with the condo and nice boats. You know, since 2009, when this, the previous owner, whoever had it at the time, started the process, and now here we are, I mean, a lot's happened, and a lot's changed over time. One of the big concerns that I have, or two concerns that I have tonight, one is Councilwoman Ramswell is abstaining from voting for certain reasons, that I'm not privy to all of that. And it's kinda concerning that we're having even this potential application going on with what I've seen so far in the news and what I've been reading from law enforcement. That's one concern I have about even dealing with this tonight. Second concern is, we've been working for years on a harbor capacity study to understand, what I've been told, what's going on in the harbor, not only for the boats, but for the businesses, the runoff, the water, the environment, residences, everything. And since we've been, since I've been up here the past year, almost year, when we talk about harbor, we're always told, well, we need a way till the harbor capacity study's done before we do anything that's gonna impact our harbor. And here we are tonight, wanting to approve a 53-slip dock before this capacity study's done. So, while I like the project, it's concerning that we're putting the cart before the horse about this particular project, but we don't do that with other projects. And I know there's arguments about livery versus residential and all that stuff, but the big picture for me and for the residents is we're studying the harbor capacity, but now we're gonna approve 53-slip yachts, possibly 100-foot yacht if Jerry Jones comes down here and pulls it in from Sandestine or something. So, it's concerning for me for those couple of reasons, but that's all I have right now, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Ms. Bagby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll apologize to everybody. I bounced around, so I'll have some questions for the staff, and for you, Mr. Hunter, and for Mr. Trammell. First of all, to the staff, I will give you a task. I hear what you're saying, what is currently in our rules, our land development code, but ancillary uses should require parking, okay? And the reason is, you're trying to suspend reality. These boats, and I'll get to the boat sizes here in a second, people are gonna park, even if they don't have a captain and a crew. People have boats to take their friends out boating. So, my friends are gonna come over. My wife and I both have a car. We only have a four-bedroom house, so I've got my parking spots, but when my friends come over, where are they gonna park? So, I just want us to look at particularly this example. It's too late for the, I mean, this, this, no pun intended, this ship has sailed on this one, but in the future, we ought to look at an ancillary parking requirement when there's a value add, or there is a activity add. I guess this would be for the staff, the city manager. So, we have the parking spots before you get into this right-of-way that's in this project, and then we have the parking spots, the parallel parking spots, in this right-of-way. What, refresh my memory on, we have no overnight parking, right?
That's correct.
What do we say the hours of overnight are? When will those parking spots be completely empty, or towed, or fined, or whatever we do with them?
I believe the stated hours are that there is no parking between 11:00 PM and 3:00 AM, if I recall.
Okay. So, if we go, and we'll send a code person out there every night, and they'll, if there's a car there, they'll get fined, or they'll get towed, right? What's the fine for violating overnight parking? Any idea? I'm sorry, I...
Yeah. Can we stay on the subject matter?
No, this is the subject matter, because that parking, everybody addressed the parking issue. What I don't want is the captain and the two mates thinking that all that public parking is their parking. Are all those people coming to visit in the condo think that that public parking is their parking? No, that public parking is public parking for our park at the end of this road. So, I want to know that we have a plan, and we have, so if you don't have the answer, come back to me with that later. Mr. Trammell, what is the largest boat that can be in the, and we'll get to the dockage, but the flexible docks, what is the longest boat that can be parked there?
The longest slip is approximately 140 feet.
140 feet.
Now, that's maximum.
Right.
So, you can put a 60-footer in there.
Right. No, I just deal with the maximum. I know you could put a little rowboat in there, but you're not. So, because that's not the type of people that we're trying to attract, and I understand that thing, too. So, 140 feet, how wide is those boats typically?
I don't know the specific dimension, but it varies tremendously. I mean, it could be anywhere between 16 feet, it could be 25 feet, it could be greater.
Okay. So, we're trying to get them out of the mouth of the harbor. See, I'm just trying, I'm envisioning, why do we need 150, a maximum of 140, I'm sorry, I misquoted you, a maximum of 140-foot length if we can't even get that boat in there? So, what, how did y'all come up with, we need one of these flexible docks to be 140 feet? Who came up with that number, I guess, besides you?
Well, it's, it's, I think we're getting a little bit too into the weeds on it. It's flexibility. Do we envision there's going to be a 140-foot boat there parked permanently? We're authorized for that through the regulatory agencies, but in all reality, likely not, likely not. And it's, we're simply trying to be flexible. That's all.
I know. Well, that's what I, that was my next, where I was going. I mean, why do we need the flexibility to have a 140-foot boat if we know we can't get one? Yeah. Yeah, I got that. I got that, Johnny, but that's, then you should have two flexible docks of 70 feet each. That would even make more sense to me. But I, that, I'm just trying to think. Now, I'm a little confused because I thought I knew what these flexible places were, and then, but I keep hearing people say transient. And then, I hear one of my peers say, oh, my buddies come over from Houston in their big boat, and it gets to park there for a week or two. But I thought that wasn't gonna be allowed in this project. So, now, can you kind of educate us on what can be put there?
Well, varying agencies have varying definitions for what is flexible, what is transient, what is permanent, what is, there's other descriptions as well. So, if that slip is owned by that condominium owner, and his friend is coming over, as long as his boat fits in the slip, they can come over. He can have a boat parked there permanently, he can just leave it empty, and just be for his friends to come over. So, the use could be transient, but they are all designed as permanent slips. Whether they are flexible, meaning the length is flexible, or whether they are fixed, they are all meant as permanent slips.
Okay.
And they were all authorized as such.
Okay. So, now, I understand, so, and Ms. Camp's gone, because one of the questions I had was, she's, oh, she said we couldn't put, or she couldn't put, the staff couldn't put a time limit, you know, or a number of dockings there. So, if any boat can, if I own a slip and I own a condominium, any boat can... a slip, and I own a condominium, any boat can park there with my permission, for as long, or as short, or as many times a day as they want? Would that be an accurate statement?
It's a, it's a hypothetical, and those are always difficult to answer, but, yeah, and theoretically, yes, if that is your slip, you, that use is controlled by you, at no commercial activity, granted.
Right, okay, all right. Or, is living aboard, I assume that that's allowed, right?
No.
No.
Live aboards are prohibited by our DEP authorization.
Okay.
We are not proposing live aboards.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Ms. Cops is back, so I've got a question for her. Could you explain tolling, and, you know, just the concept of tolling, and how it applies in this setting?
You're talking about for development order extensions?
Yes.
So if there is, under Florida statutes, if the governor issues an emergency executive order, you know, due to a hurricane or something similar, then the time that you have to act under your existing development order is told, or kind of stayed, pending the timeframe in that executive order.
So you start out with two years, and then your, your clock runs, but once an, if I understand you correctly, once that emergency order is issued, then the clock stops. So you may have used two months of your development time, but you, it stops for however long that emergency order is?
Generally, I, I think if I was going to answer, I'd want to review, like I was mentioning before the meeting, the executive order at play and the language of the executive order one by one to make that determination, but generally, yes. And I don't know if the applicant has anything to add on that.
I, I think Ms. Cops' answer is correct. I mean, it depends the nature of the executive order. The law changed, my mind goes blank, because we've all been living in a different world the last year and a half, but in the last three years, the law changed to where specifically the nature of the executive order and what is being told matters.
Okay, all right, but it's like a D-DU, more or less, okay. I guess this is for you, Mr. Hunter, or Matt, the cost of this, estimated cost of this project?
We really don't know at this time. They, historically, it was on the order of about a million dollars, but you all know material prices, whether it's concrete, whether it's timber, we're still looking at all of that very closely, so it's, it's too difficult to say it'll change tomorrow.
Okay, no, I'm just trying to get...
Scale.
A scale of the 25% that you're going to pay, so 250,000, it might be 500,000 by the time. Another money question, Louis, this is probably for you, impact fees, they are assessed when? At CO, or?
Yes, at the time of CO, that's when we know the true cost of the development.
Okay, and is it the fee schedule that would be, be in place at the time of CO, or would it be the fee schedule of the date this DO is approved?
At the time of, at the time of pulling the permits.
Pulling the permit, okay, thank you. See, I just, it's been a little while since I've been up here, so I'm just trying to knock out some compliments here. There was a question about sidewalks, and I didn't see a sidewalk, I saw the road, and I saw the little lollipop, is there a sidewalk in that right-of-way?
In, in the driveway? Well, the roadway is not complete yet, so we've still got to go through that entire review of that, of that project.
Okay, see, I can't see in this little map?
Yeah.
That y'all, you know, in the three binders full of stuff y'all gave me, is there a sidewalk?
There's supposed to be a sidewalk.
In here, okay? Is it going to be on the harbor side, or is it going to be on the Upland condo side?
On both sides.
Both sides, okay, thank you. Just want to make sure those people can get safely from the big parking lot to the, okay. This, this marina doesn't include any pump-out facility, does it?
Correct.
It does?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, that's what I thought, but I didn't see it in the thing, so I was, oh, okay. This is a hypothetical for the staff again, because this occurred to me as, as the public was asking questions. Not the marina, but say I owned a property on the north side of the harbor, and could I, if I didn't charge anybody, could I shuttle people over, let them off at the marina to go to the public Noriega Point Park, or whatever we're going to call that park?
This is where that language comes in, with the departures and arrivals needing to be typical of a residential use. So you, you would not be able to do an ongoing shuttle system with multiple trips every day, or anything like that. But if you were taking one trip, yeah.
Okay, but say I, and I don't know that they're going to do this, or if they even can do it, because this really isn't about condo, but say they sold club memberships to their pool area, or to whatever amenities they're going to have, to another condo on the north side of the harbor, could I come over, no?
No, first of all, I feel like I'm taking the bar exam.
You are.
Luckily, I passed that, so hopefully it happens again. But really, they can't do that. It is boat slips for the residents of this condominium, so no.
Okay, just want to make sure. I think that's all the questions I have at this time. Yeah, no, I am, I'm just, well, I'm, I'm learning, too, thanks.
Mr. Destin?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and I hate to beat a dead horse, but I take it that permanent residential excludes timeshare?
Yes, sir, it's not a timeshare.
Okay, and neither was, and we'll grant when it started, and that's, unfortunately, it had, it had all high-end people, and we had great expectations, and they had great plans to do that. Economic intervention prevented that, and it went from having Commander's Palace as the restaurant and other really nice things, to timeshare. Is there any mechanism in the condo documents or anything that would prevent that from happening?
There are in the condo documents, and I believe, I don't want to quote it, because I'm, it'd take me longer than we have this evening, but I believe your city code prevents it as well.
Jim?
I'm sorry, prevents, prohibits what?
Timeshares and short-term rentals.
Yes, as, as a long-term residential use, that would not be permitted, correct.
Okay.
And I will say, the 2009 DO also requires that copies of the condominium documents be provided to the land use attorney and city staff, so we will get those before they get any permits.
Okay, and I have no problem with a docking facility, that's why people buy waterfront property, that's why I have waterfront property, and it appears that this one meets the criteria set forth in our harbor ordinance. So I have a few minor questions about what does transient mean, does the public, can the public use transient? Matt?
No, not without the specific authorization of the owner of that slip.
And that would be everybody, or transient slips owned in unison, or are they owned by individuals? Because I saw three transient slips.
Well, let's, let's stick with flexible, so they're, they're flexible, and let's stay away from the word transient, but whether they're flexible or a fixed, permanent slip, all being permanent, the public cannot just come up and use any of those slips without the specific permission of that condominium owner.
And so a condominium owner does own the flexible, not transient, but flexible slip, one would be assigned to a condominium owner?
Yes.
The only other really question I have is, Mr. King hit the, the issue right on the head about the parking. We're residential or commercial, we're, we have a facility here that's going to take a lot of parking, need a lot of parking. We, we have the ability, that right-of-way is 100 feet wide, and what is that lot, I walked it today, is it 300 feet long? Staff, help me out.
600.
Tell them.
600.
I thought that was a long walk. So, so that's a public right-of-way that's owned, be simple, both now and before this agreement, because we got that from the county, who got it from the federal government. There's a deed there, which we referred to as a rogue deed, I'm not even sure what that means, but in any event, we own that fee simple. I've heard discussions so far about a tentative agreement with the DEP about how many spaces are going to be in that right-of-way, 22. Is that a minimum or a maximum? Because I don't know that the DEP has the authority to tell us how many spaces we can have in a right-of-way that we own, be simple.
I got that 22 number just simply by looking at the proposed alignment of that and counting the spots, that's, that's all I did.
Well, my, my fear is, and, and the fear is, is there, because I know we could put a lot of parking in there that would be open to the people who are going to use that park, and any agreement, whether it's the right-of-way construction or not, that restricts our ability to determine how much parking we can put there, be reasonable about it, not impact the people there too severely, but allow the folks who are going to go to that park that we now have spent along with the state of Florida millions and millions of dollars on, will make that decision. And so that is the other point that I want to make, that what's going to be done with that right-of-way is a decision made by the City of Destin, since we supposedly, you agree, applicant, that it's a fee simple ownership issue?
Yeah, the, the city owns the right-of-way.
Okay, so I don't want anything in this right-of-way construction agreement, and I've, and I've, I'll pull it up here in a minute, and there are some things that concern me on page eight and 11 about that, that very issue. I want to guarantee that that doesn't happen to us, that we have flexibility as far as what parking is going to go in that right-of-way, because we do have 50 yachts that, if they have an average of three crew members, that's 150.
Can confirm with the applicant, but I think the applicant's willing to build according to the specifications of council, as far as the road, correct?
Yes, of course, I mean, assuming, assuming the condominium building stays as, has been permitted by the city, we have no problem building the, I mean, in accordance with City of Destin code, we have no problem building the road however it's designed. I mean, as it's presently designed, 95% designed, I, I believe Mr. Johnson's right, there's, what, 22, including two to four handicap spaces located within the right-of-way parking area. Remember, Councilwoman, that, the, the one thing, I mean, I, I suppose, someone could come early in the morning that worked in a, in a boat, and leave that afternoon or that evening, but they can't stay there. I mean, your code does not permit them to stay at that location from a parking perspective. And, I mean, ideally, they would park in the condominium building itself, I'm not going to sit here and testify today, because none of us know that, in fact, that's where they park, but ideally, that is where they park, or they park somewhere else, and the boat picked them up, and they came over to the facility and, and took guests from the condominium complex out, fishing, or boat-riding, whatever they did that day. And, and by the way, I mean, all of these slips are not 60-foot slips, I mean, there's 30-foot slips within the, lots of 30-foot slips within the area, so, within the 50, 53-slip total that we're talking about, so, but your, your point's a fair point, and, I mean, again, I think whatever is reasonable from a city standpoint, from a parking perspective, assuming the other obligations that you all require within your road right-of-way are able to be met, or else are, are waived, we're, we're willing to build it.
Okay, and as a fellow that worked on a boat for 35 years, I went to work at four in the morning and got through at nine at night, I don't know if that's classified as overnight parking or not, but I certainly felt like it.
Yes.
I noticed in the agreement, the right-of-way agreement, it says that you are obliged to put the road in after the issuance of your CO, I think. Let me see if I can put my glasses.
No, it's, so they've got to build it within nine months of the city pulling all the permits for it, so, and then after the CO and the CC are issued, they have to repair any damage that happened, that occurred to it.
Have we read it closely, because I haven't been involved in a lot of these projects, and there's a lot of squabbling about a CO sometimes at the end, and sometimes it lasts for months, so I don't know that I want to tie it to CO. I want to tie it to issuance of the building permits.
So actually, though, the road has to be built within nine months of us getting our permits with DEP for the park, not the CO on the condo?
Okay, so you're sure it doesn't say that?
Yeah, no, it's nine months of us getting our permitting with the park, and then after that, when they get their CO for the condo and docking facilities later, assuming it's approved tonight, then they have to repair the road. So you might be thinking of that language, that's also in there.
I may have misread it.
Mm-hmm.
But is there any reason why we shouldn't put in this document where we're realigning right-of-ways, like Mr. Schnitt said, I'm not real sure why that's happening, because I asked for a, a copy of, of a survey that showed the, showed the surveys, I think we all got it, and there's a right-of-way there now. Whether or not it's a rogue right-of-way, I don't, like I said, I'm not even sure what that term means, but it, it's in the book, and it's been there since 1998, and it was there prior to that, but it was owned by the county. But I'm willing to do what you need, but I want to make sure that there's no restrictions on our ability to place what parking we think is adequate in that right-of-way. And Kyle, is there a way to insert that into this agreement? If the, if the applicant doesn't sound like they have a terrible problem with that, that would make me feel much more comfortable.
Sure, I mean, we can change, and I think probably the applicant would work with us to change that language to something you'd be more comfortable with. The, again, the, the road project's not fully designed and engineered at this point, so all we've got is concepts that the city council has previously approved through use of our environmental, environmental resource permit, and our previous 30, 60, 90% plan, so that's why we assume the council wanted the road to look like that, but if we want to go back to DEP and get them to change that, we probably could.
And the reason?
Well, I mean, we just need to take out some language, because right now, it says it's going to, the road, and this was really a protection of the city, we included language that made the road have to be built as closely as reasonably possible to, as depicted in the 90%, 95%, and the ERU plans, but we could probably take that out, and then if y'all want to talk with FDP about re-engineering, redesigning the road, we could do that. It's going to delay the phase-three improvements, of course, and, you know, we'd have to coordinate with FDP and all that, it would delay everything, I think, but we could do that if that's what y'all want to do.
Yeah, and, and the reason I say it at all is it's referred to there several times that there were council actions to approve those 30, 60, 90%. When I see that in a document, it makes me nervous, because that's subject to judicial review, isn't it? Rather than the city's in charge of the design, it's a little less subject.
Subject to what review, I'm sorry, Mr. Destin?
I, I said, I saw it referenced several times in the document, the 30, 60, 90% had been approved at council meetings, and it gave the dates at which that it was approved, so that makes me nervous when things like that are in there, rather than just saying, right of the design of the right-of-way and the road shall be left to the discretion of the city in cahoots with DEP and the developer.
I mean, like, like I said, I don't think we can, we can change, soften up the language if y'all want, I don't, I don't hear any...
I can just add one thing, in conversations with the applicant, I, they offered to build the road in any manner that the city wanted it, and we were trying to define it in the way that we thought the council wanted it, based on those previous approvals, but it was not something that came from them.
Okay.
We, we put that in to, because that's what we thought the city council would want. It can be rewritten, it can be, it can say to maximize the parking in the reasonable discretion of the city, something like that, perhaps, to accomplish that goal.
Okay, and as we get through the motion process here, I will probably ask you to make that happen. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, Ms. Baker.
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to make the recommended motion. I move the city council to approve subject major development order for the docking facility, the major subdivision, and the accompanying Gulf Shore Drive Extension Construction Agreement, and marine construction permits, subject to the following conditions. One, prior to permit approval, the applicant must provide proof that the state's net positive public benefit fee of $500,000 has been paid to the Trust for Public Land. Number two, prior to permit approval and issuance, the applicant must satisfy the city's net positive... net positive environmental benefit by offsetting the impacts with improvements or paying a fee equal to 25% of the cost of construction of the docking facility. And number three, any use of the docking facility is contingent upon a final certificate of occupancy for the previously approved upland development and all other conditions set forth in the DO 21-23.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it for more discussion.
All right, I have a second. Mr. Bagby, you're first up.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I've got a few more questions. I know that's going to surprise y'all. I forgot to ask, because this is one of the questions that we're on, the public questions. Does this project fall underneath or fall within the Holiday Isle Improvement Association area?
The answer is yes.
Okay. So, by extension, you'll have to follow their rules, which even I don't even understand what their rules are, but they have them. I do know that, because I've been up here long enough to know that people come, the, and will, of these 53 slips, will every single one of them, how do you determine who gets? You've got 79 units, you may have up to 79 units, you've got 53 slips. How do you determine who gets, which condos get the slips? I assume the five little, or the 10 smaller units probably don't get a slip, so that's still 64 for 53, or 69.
I don't know of those specific details, and I don't know if any one of us can speak to that point, but the condition remains that you cannot be a slip owner unless you are a condo owner.
Okay. So, will the developer, really, this is what I want to know, will the developer retain control of any or multiple slips for this project? Other than initially, he, she, they, y'all, will control them all, okay? But what I'm, my concern is, is it becomes much easier to do the commercial when you own five slips.
Yeah, well, two questions you ask.
Right.
I'll take the commercial part first. You can't do commercial. It's not allowed. I assume someone could do commercial, and it would be in violation of the city's code. And that is not the intent. The intent is that the developer will initially own all 53 docks, and they will be sold with the condominium units. So, the highest buyer, those condominium unit owners, one condominium unit owner may want two docks because they've got two boats, but the, generally speaking, generally speaking, it's, there's less, there's less boat slips than there are condominiums.
Right.
So, they will be acquired in addition to the condominium.
So, I just want to make sure I understand what you just told me. So, I could buy one, I could buy one of the 1,040-whatever-square-foot units, and I could buy three slips?
Yeah, I mean.
In theory.
I mean.
I'm just, I mean, you asked, when you said that they could buy one condo and they could buy two boat slips if they had two boats.
I assume that's possible. I, I mean, we haven't, at least to my knowledge, we haven't restricted that allowance of boats. It would be a foolish way to sell the boat slips, but I assume that could be done.
Okay. Because you can't live on board. Yeah, no, I get that. Okay, I would just ask the maker of the motion to add to her motion, subject to the staff completing a review of the tolling time on this project.
City Clerk, you can amend my motion to add that.
Will the second?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I would just have one observation, and I understand Mr. Bagby's question, but this project hadn't been approved yet, so how could it possibly have a tolling time? Are we asking what the future tolling times could be?
It's an ancillary project, remember that.
That it is.
And so, it's ancillary to the primary. The primary has a tolling. I just.
We're in the weeds.
A little concerned, so.
So, we're asking for the tolling?
I just want to make sure we're improving, no, on the.
On the main?
Because you can't have an ancillary without a primary.
I get it.
I just want to make sure that we, I think we're good, but I don't know.
We previously have determined that the 2009 DO is validly extended. It's currently extended until about 2029. So, I don't know the exact number of days offhand, but it's a valid DO. It's been extended since 2009 to 2021 and beyond.
So, that. Still subject to tolling, though, right? Every project's still subject to tolling.
Still subject to all of the executive orders and statutory tolling.
Right.
Okay, so we've had an amendment to the motion approved by the second.
All right. Mayor, I would like to.
Okay, I got Mr. Schmidt next, if that's okay? And I'm going to get everybody. Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you. There was language in some of the documents about the $500,000 Trust for Public Land is going to go to Captain Leonard Destin Park. Was that in the old DO or new DO or application, or was I just was concerned if that's a specific earmarked item that now the park's done, does it?
In 2018, the applicant came to the City Council, I remember Matt Trammell was there, and proposed a public benefit, and the council turned down at that time, and so it proceeded without council's directive. And I don't know if, Matt, you want to add anything to that as to how it got to where it's at now? But it was out of the city council's hand by the city council's choice.
Yeah, so, as much as we would like to just cut the city a check and spend that money to its best use, that's unfortunately not how the rules work on the state's regulatory side. So, as a part of the DEP permitting process, because this is a private residential facility, we are required to pay a net positive public benefit, not an environmental benefit, a public benefit. We presented a number of alternatives to them, additional monies to Noriega Point, dredging of Destin Harbor, water taxi docks, other park improvements. As Ms. Kopp had mentioned, one of those was presented to the City Council and voted down. Ultimately, the current proposal is to pay that money to the Trust for Public Lands. It previously was earmarked for Leonard Destin Park. I can't speak to the Trust for Public Lands, but that specific item was approved by the Board of Trustees, the Governor's Board. So, going back and just giving this money to the city, I do not believe is authorized. We, that money, per our authorization, that money needs to go to the Trust for Public Lands.
Yeah, I'm not, maybe I didn't ask clearly, and I apologize. So, did you just say that the current authorization is to go to Trust for Public Land, which their board has earmarked for the Captain Leonard Destin Park? Is that what you just said?
I, no, I cannot speak to the Trust for Public, once the, our submerged lands and DEP regulatory authorization require that we provide a check to the Trust for Public Lands, I cannot comment to what happens with that check once it's in the Trust for Public Lands.
So, there's somewhere it talks about, is that just old documents referring to old meetings? But some, one of the documents specifically says the $500,000 is going to be earmarked for Destin Leonard.
Kyle?
I just don't want, you know, I don't want earmarked for that if we don't need, but it sounds like we can't earmark it, but it's going to the Trust for Public Lands, so.
All I know is it's going to the Trust for Public Land. I know the same thing.
And that is the requirement from the state, that we are to pay that NPPB fee to the Trust for Public Lands. At the time, I believe it was earmarked for Leonard Destin Park.
Sure. Well, I love the park, and if that's, if, I just, if it gets past it, everything, the park's done, so I just want to make sure that.
Understood.
I hope we can go with somewhere else for that money if all this happens, but.
Out of their control.
Yeah. Well, it's our, it's our park now, isn't it? They handed it over to us? Gotcha. That's all. You know, I just, for reasons I stated earlier, I have an issue. I don't have an issue with the project in general, I have an issue with the project today at this time. You know, in the future, if I had opportunity, I would love to see this project happen, but I have two concerns that I've already stated, that I just, I don't feel comfortable at this time for this particular project, so, thank you.
Mr. King?
Yeah, I think that was, that's kind of a point that I was wanting to make, is the timeline. I mean, we've, it seems like, it seems like advantageous timing to do this, bring it before us, the.
Mr. Mayor, we've got a lot of public record situation going on, and there's a lot of chatter going on, and it's bothering me, sir. And I don't mean to be disrespectful, but I don't know if it's a call to order, but there's just microphones, and I think it's disrespectful to the public as well with the chatter that's going on up here.
As far as the, just to kind of bring a little bit of clarity to the deeded boat slip situation, I've been involved, had some involvement with some condominiums like this, and one of the, a question that I have is, will there be a dock master, will there be a dock attendant, somebody to enforce all this? Is that in play right now?
Yeah, so one of our previous responses to the city during the TRC review, I believe it was, we had made commitments that, alluding to the trash pickup and the maintenance associated with those docks, there will be specific dock attendants that are specifically required to manage this facility.
And I've spent, spent time on a ton of docks, a ton of marines in this town, the ones that have dock attendants are, for the most part, run like old machines. And if it's not them, then the homeowner association will take care of it. They'll have people down there backwards and forwards. That's really all I have, thank you.
Mr. Bagby?
I think this is probably for Mr. Hunter. This goes back to the, I own one condo and I buy two slips. Can, and maybe this is Ms. Kopp, I don't know, can I sublease, can I lease out one of those?
So.
Or would that be a commercial activity?
That would be considered a commercial activity, so we have that specifically addressed in the DO. So, if you own a unit, you can use the slip. If you are a long-term tenant in the unit of a year or more, you can use the slip, or if you have permission of those and you're a guest, you can use the slip. However, you cannot sublease the slip out beyond that. No sublease, that's commercial.
And what would be our, again, going back to the, I own one condo and have two slips, how would we know? Because code goes down and they see the same two boats and those same two slips for six months. I mean, we're, how would we enforce?
Some, a lot of the city's enforcement is complaint-based. We'd probably find out from somebody that would complain to us, at which point, we'd proceed with enforcement. The only other way we would know is if we personally witnessed, you know, a commercial use, but the sublease, I think the way we'd find out would be complaints.
Okay.
Mr. Destin?
Thank you, Mayor. I understand Mr. Schmidt's reluctance to go forward with this while we have not completed our harbor study. But we have had and do now have the ability to declare a moratorium on dock construction until after that study is complete. Am I correct about that?
Yeah, you could, you could have a moratorium on docks.
But we have not.
But you have not.
And so.
And this application is here now.
That's it, and that's right, we can't reach back and catch applicants who have already applied and who are here tonight. So, you know, at a later date sometime real soon, if a motion were to be made to do that until we've through with our study, that would be a reasonable thing to support, I would think. I had, I had a lot of questions about the sequency of the construction until tonight when they said they were going to put their dredge material over onto the footprint of where the condo was going to go. And it lit a little light bulb for me, you can't build your condo and then put your dredge material over there where it is.
That's right.
So, that, that makes sense, so that put that away for me. I would ask that the motion include, or I'll make a amendment to it, to direct Mr. Valman to get with the parties to work on the Gulf Shore Extension Agreement so that we make it quite clear that design and parking shall be determined at the discretion of the City of Destin.
City Clerk, please add that as an amendment to my motion.
Okay. And then that is all I have.
All righty then, we have a motion, multiple amendments to the motion, approval with a second, and let's go ahead and take this to a vote.
Yeah, I did, too.
I voted for you.
Okay. I'm still trying to vote. Come on. There we go.
The vote is four-one. Eyes have it, so moved. All righty then, that concludes that. Gentlemen, congratulations. Look forward to working with you on the road. All right, we already knocked out the consent agenda, and let's move right on to item seven. Mr. Braden is not here. Councilwoman Ramswell?
There's a lot of, it's been going on with the school, and I'm sure y'all have been reading all the great things that have been happening, and if y'all are interested in Setsuma oranges, they are selling cases of Setsuma oranges to raise money for the school for 25 bucks, I believe it is. So, a great deal, and just continued great things coming out of the school.
And who may they contact to buy such oranges from? What's the best way to do it?
They can call the school or info@destinhighschool.org. I had to think about that. Yeah.
We'll get Catherine to put that on our website.
Yeah.
Are we allowed to solicit for the high school?
Probably not.
Public service announcement?
It's fine, we can share it if they've got it on their Facebook page.
Yes.
I'll find it and share it.
Make it shareable.
Absolutely. And that's all I have for tonight, thanks.
Mr. Destin?
Thank you, Mayor. As most of y'all recall, a couple of months ago, I stepped into the breach and took Mrs. Abey's place on the TDC when it became apparent that an alternative really wasn't an alternate and couldn't vote unless they became the representative. Because of my business demands and other time constraints, I really don't need to go forward with that, and I would like to nominate Mrs. Abey to go back on the TDC in my place.
Ms. Abey, are you, are you ready to get back on there?
I will do.
All right, we have a willing, we have a willing accomplice to Mr. Destin's recommendation, even though he didn't make a motion, Jim seconded anyways. Can we just do that by proxy, or do we need a motion and a vote?
I think Mr. Destin made a motion.
Okay.
And Mr. Bagby seconded.
Okay, but Mr. Destin has made a motion to nominate Ms. Abey to be the representative for the TDC for the Destin City Council, seconded by Mr. Bagby, and so unless there's any discussion, go ahead, Ms. Bagby.
Just clarifying that Mr. Destin will revert back to the, for what it's worth.
Who can't vote.
The only thing we're missing is the music, until we stop it, and you have to sit in the seat. All right, let's go ahead and vote. Eyes have it, you're back in business. What else, Mr. Destin?
I'm calling.
All right, Mr. Bagby?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Abey?
Nothing tonight.
Uh, Mr. King?
Nothing tonight, sir, thank you.
Mr. Schmidt?
Nothing here.
I got something. What I'd like to do is get on the agenda whenever practical, I don't know what's, how much is on the plate for next meeting, but maybe the second meeting. Let's, I'd like to have a discussion and some ideas from the council on, to evaluate our protocols here for our meetings and see if there's any efficiencies we can add, like tonight when we did the consent agenda and swept that around. I'd like to just have it on the. I'd like to just have it on the agenda, maybe everybody throwing some ideas, maybe we make some changes, maybe we don't, but I'm all about trying to be efficient in, in the meetings. Some of the stuff, we, we used to do the fill out the speaking cards and we kind of got away from that. That's something maybe we need to evaluate. Maybe that's working good, but, but I just want y'all to just be thinking about it and we'll put it as an agenda item, so if we do want to make some changes, we can have a motion, we can make some motions and changes to that. And that's all I got for tonight. Ken, good seat, by the way, in person.
Thank you, likewise. Nothing tonight, thank you.
And Kyle, you give the last word.
Nothing for me, but we got the public too.
I know.
Kyle, don't go legal on him, you know what he meant.
I hate it, lawyers sometimes. All right, the final item is public comment at the end. Anyone like to come up and chat?
Patty Brown, 86 Shire Street. I couldn't not get up and speak. I didn't want to disappoint you, Carrie. Anyway, so.
Good to see you in person as well.
Thank you. So, anyways, I sent you guys an email about the runway park that I'm trying to do at Destin Airport to kind of bridge the gap between the community and us pilots. So, I started the process. I've got all the information on the signage, the play equipment, so I just ask that you guys keep it in mind and support me. It's gonna be a long process. It actually cost Greenville Airport a million dollars to do that. Ours will be on a much smaller scale, but I'm really motivated to do this because I think it would be great for our community.
But I'd just like to let you know, I've got a 12-month-old granddaughter and of course, they're living with us while they're building her house and I'm at the very end of the airport and the biggest kick I get is every time a plane falls, no matter what she's doing, when the plane falls over, she goes, "Oh, plane." And, and so having a park by the airport where the kids could come and get exposed to aviation, I think would be a wonderful idea and I, I look forward to seeing what you have planned.
Well, I'm hopeful. It was amazing to see the amount of community participation in that park. They had a picnic shelter and people were just there with their kids and the kids were saying, "Watch me ride my bike down the runway," and so, I mean, it was, it was really fun. So, I'm hopeful.
So, if we Google airplane, airport parks, we can get some ideas what you're, you're doing?
Yeah, look, just, it's called the Runway Park at Greenville, South Carolina Airport. I, I had sent you guys a few pictures, but I have tons and tons of pictures, even pictures of how it was embedded in the airport and the county in that area did not donate the land, but allow them to do that. So, it's been great. And also, I sent the, the coasters with the flags to a county commissioner and he's also looking into whether the TDC would help us with that. I think it would work out good.
I did bring it up to the TDC.
Oh, good.
Two months, two meetings back before I had to step back for a minute. So, I think that between the TDC and the commissioners, I think we're gonna get that to be something we do literally throughout the Destin-Fort Walton area of Walton County.
That's great, and also I forwarded to you guys, I know you guys are sick of hearing from me, the, the thing that the Walton County's looking at you about digging the holes, because it was a pretty big problem this year. Some really deep holes were dug and especially the county park, James Lee. So, maybe we can look at some of those things and figure out if we can improve that and the flags and things like that to help out, you know, not only the residents and our turtles, but our tourists.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
You saw my response.
I did.
Did you see these?
All right then. We only went 10 minutes over my New Year's resolution. Everyone, thank you very much for everything. Is there anyone else? I forgot. Anyone else want to speak? Seeing none, this portion of the meeting is over.